I am calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli will be joining us shortly. Councilwoman Depena will not be attending this evening. Councilmember Graziano.
Here.
Natari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Councilwoman Juma Burke will not be attending this evening, and Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the July 6th, 2020 issue of the Star Ledger, and in the July 9th issue of the Belleville Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To recall that which stands one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice of all. The next item on today's agenda, if you're following along, is executive session. I will be entertaining a motion to go into executive session for the following items: tax appeals, St. Anthony's parking lot negotiation, personnel, and NORC water contract. We'll be discussing those four things. No votes, no actions will be taken while we're in executive session. I'm going to mute the live feed and turn the camera away, and we will resume the live feed and the audio and the camera as we exit executive session. So without further ado, to discuss those four items, can I have a motion to enter executive session?
Make a motion to enter executive session. Second.
Have a motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me. So if you're watching us online, we're gonna mute the audio, and we're gonna turn the camera away. We will resume shortly. So just bear with us. Officially back. Okay, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to exit executive session.
Second.
No, make a motion.
Can I make a motion?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor to exit executive session?
Aye.
Aye. We are now out of executive session officially. Moving on with our agenda. Item number five, five A is discussions. Item number one is township manager Iakona. He's going to give an executive overview of some of the things that we just discussed in executive, which are budget cut recommendations for 2020 and 2021 municipal budgets.
And specifically on that topic, correct?
But you can't be that specific.
The personnel stuff you talked about, you can't... I mean, just an overview of as we continue to look ways to manage this year's budget and prepare us for next year's budgets. We clearly have, we have already reached out to some of the unions to sit down to see if there's ways and means to compromise and get give backs, so to speak, if that's the word we want to use. We're also going into brand-new contract year with the public employees, so we're looking at ways and means of reducing municipal spending. So everything is on the table, and certainly our last, last, last resort, which would be, you know, Plan D, if Plan A and Plan B and Plan C doesn't work, then unfortunately, Plan D would be like layoffs. We never want to use that word.
Well, when we do use that word, we also use the other word.
Demotions. And it's a combination of both. So from a general discussion that we had in executive session where we discussed personnel decisions that could result in tax-saving measures, that's basically the items. Unless anybody's gonna add to my summary, then I'll just, my report is very brief tonight. I do want to report that the Belleville Home Improvement Program is making great strides. We've been meeting, we have forms in place, and we hope to roll out the program for residents of Belleville, which is a great, great program where it affords people to fix up their homes and actually receive grants. So it's money that people, residents of Belleville will be qualified. We hope to roll out this program within thirty or forty-five days. We got all the documents now. Yep. So we're making some great, great strides. So that's a program that residents of Belleville are gonna hear a lot about in the very near future. Very excited about it. And again, we always thank the police and Fire Department and Public Works for doing their share every day, and they've been very busy this summer. And I just would point out that our Health Department, in the month of August, attended to three hundred quality-of-life calls, and that includes, you know, grass, weeds, garbage, you know, all quality-of-life issues. And I just got the August report, which represents close to three hundred calls. So...
Sounds good to me.
That's my chief manager's report for tonight.
Next item is item number seven, report of the mayor. So I received a phone call on probably August 26th or 7th, which is an unfortunate call when I get them about an armed robbery in Belleville. I just want to commend the Belleville Police Department because our patrol did pull over a vehicle within a day or two of that at 1:00 AM in the morning and arrested everybody inside the car and found out that those individuals were responsible for several break-ins throughout the area. So that was a big stop for us. I want to commend the Belleville Police Department for being vigil all night long. They never stopped working 24/7. So I just want to commend the department as a whole, and specifically those officers. I believe there was also a gun found in the vehicle, so always, we know that their lives are always at risk. Another update. Thank you, Mr. Manager and the town engineer. We have finally paved the municipal parking lot across the street. I've been complaining about that for some time, including the fact that there's no lights there. I think we're getting muni meters now. It's newly paved, it's newly striped. And are the lights there? Are they coming?
The PSNG has not installed them yet.
Okay. But we are getting lights because that at nighttime was pitch black, and it was always a health and a safety risk there. So I'm glad to see that we're finally doing that, again, leftover money from last year's road surfacing program. So two good things there. I want to just extend a quick welcome to all the children that started school today. Today was Belleville's first day back. I know it wasn't easy for the district. It wasn't, decisions weren't easy, implementations certainly not easy. I want to commend the district, all the teachers, all the parents, all the students. Hopefully, we can get some semblance back of reality and some normalcy back in everybody's lives, especially the children. So I just want to commend them. I believe our U-12 baseball team, we are preparing a resolution or proclamation for them. Once we have in-person back, we would obviously have them here to present, but they are district champions, district champions, I believe, right? Is that what it's called, district champion? I was following them on social media. Went to one or two games. These kids are great kids, doing a lot. Commend all of the coaches, parents, obviously, the athletes. Looking forward to having them in council here so we can present them with a nice proclamation. They deserve it. I did get information, we will be deciding by the end of the week. It looks like that our November Veterans Day weekend 5K run is probably gonna be a go. The governor has been allowing certain 5Ks as long as you have less than 500 people. It's something that I think you can easily socially distance. I think it'd be good to, again, get some semblance of normalcy back to be doing that. That said, I do not think the vet parade is a go because of the children and all the participation, everybody walking close proximity and all that stuff. So my thinking is that if we do lose the parade this year, at least we'll still have the 5K run. We can maybe jazz that up a bit and hopefully raise even more money this year for our veterans organizations and for our scholarship. That said, we do have some events coming up this Friday. We do have a 9/11 ceremony. I know some communities were canceling theirs. Belleville's not one of them. It is gonna be 11 o'clock at the 9/11 memorial. We are gonna socially distance. I do believe it will be livestreamed. So please participate if you can in person. If you're concerned for health or health-related issues, please make sure you watch and participate livestream this coming Friday at 11:00 AM. And this coming Sunday, I'm just trying to see if I have all the details. This, let me just get the information first. Got it.
Livestream this coming Friday at 11:00 AM. And this coming Sunday, I'm just trying to see if I have all the details.
We don't want that to...
This, let me just get the information first.
I'm on the website. Okay. I'm on the town website, which is why the live feed is going. So we are gonna hold a vigil. It's not Sunday, that's why I wanted to go check it myself. It's not Sunday, it's this coming Monday evening for the soldier who was murdered on base and really put a focus on sexual harassment in the military. You've seen her, you've probably seen her face, you've seen her talked about. It's Vanessa Gullen, I believe, if you pronounce her names. It's gonna be Monday the 14th at 6:00 PM. Oh, I'm sorry, Monday the 14th at 7:30. The information is on our town website, information's on our social media. You might be asking yourself, why are we doing that? We have a resident, Lucy, here in Belleville. She's a part of my Veterans Council. My Veterans Council is the four heads of the four veterans organizations, and Lucy's a female vet, very influential in her ranks. She has traveled back and forth to Washington DC probably six or seven times to testify before Congress on this very topic. So it's something that's near and dear to her. It's something that I don't mind getting behind. It's something I don't mind raising awareness for. Unfortunately, I think her story was lost amid some of the other news that has captivated the country in the past few weeks or past few months. So it'd be nice to be able to do something. We've invited our four veterans organizations, we've invited the Women's Club to participate in that. I think it'd be a nice thing for the township to do. Again, information is on our social media as well as the township website. Last but not least, we are doing COVID testing. Belleville's second round of COVID testing will be Monday, September 21st. Details will be coming out again Monday, September 21st. It's gonna be at Belleville High School, just like last time, probably in the afternoon. You will have to register on the Essex County website at essexcovid.org. Once you register for that, you do not need to be symptomatic. You don't need to have any reason. You just could be a Belleville resident who wants to get tested. They will allocate the first 200 or so slots just for Belleville residents, probably the weekend or so before. They will then open that up to the entire county. So if you know anybody that wants a COVID test, again, that's gonna be Monday, September 21st at the high school. Steve, if you're not a Belleville resident, so don't even think about it. Okay, that really ends my report of the mayor. This is the first council meeting of the month in July. In August, we only had one council meeting. So first council meetings of the month, we do committee reports. Any council member, we'll start with the deputy mayor. Anything that you're involved in?
Just one thing, the September 11th ceremony, that's gonna be livestreamed, right?
Yeah.
I did not, I just want to make, it's livestream.
Yeah. I said it like three times.
I didn't hear the livestream part.
Three times, missed it?
I did.
All right. Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. I'm just going by who's here with me right now.
Nothing either.
Dr. Tharke, no? And we have online, we have the phone, is Mr. Councilman Revell?
I'm good, it's fine.
Okay. So do we have Mr. Cazarelli on the line yet, or no?
Not yet.
He's coming. Okay. All right. But we do have four right now, so we are quorummed. Next item, item number nine, is approval of minutes. Item A.
Combine conference program meeting of August 18th.
Need a motion?
Can I make a motion? Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I like the all in favor now. Goes faster. Communications?
Saying letter received and rose to be of planning board attorney recommending for the mayor and council about 6:30 Washington Avenue and 6:30 C Washington Avenue to declare a non-condemnation area of the building. Need letter received and rose to be of planning board attorney recommending for the mayor and council that the entire council should declare this area a need of rehabilitation. See letter received from Valer Lasky and the residents of Belmont Avenue asking for Belmont Avenue to be quickly repaved if your trucks not to be allowed on Belmont Avenue. And D, we press receive the Women's Club Belleville to conduct a tricky tray at the Belleville Senior Center on Thursday, August 8th, from 12 noon to 7:00 PM.
So a couple things there. Obviously, letters from the Planning Board Attorney are good and acceptable, Ms. Valer Lasky. I know I've dealt with this personally. When I first got in office, I saw the video, I saw the thing. I could have swore Tom Haritz was paving that street or had the street paved already, but then I did refer to your office, Anthony, and maybe even the councilwoman in that area. If you guys can look into that?
Absolutely.
And lastly, I have been in contact with the Women's Club. The Women's Club, their annual tricky tray is their biggest event of the year. They then take their money and donate it to local organizations and do a lot of great things with it. We spoke about a plan that we believe works. They're asking us for permission to basically use the senior center to have their tricky tray. It will be about five of the Women's Club members on the interior. Both doors will be open on either side of the building, allowing airflow, and less than 25 people at one time will basically stage in the parking lot, walk through, put their tickets and the items, and then walk out the other way. So less than 25 people at all times will be indoors. Both doors will be open at all times, allowing good airflow, and they'll stage it in the parking lot and bring people in, and they'll be taking all their own precautions. So I thought that was a great idea. I told them I would be thrilled to be able to assist them. I don't think anybody here has a problem with that. Nope. Hearing none. Mr. Manager, can you work on those details, please, with them? Okay. We're moving forward. So someone explain to me now, we got special action. Is this, we're doing these two things?
Yes.
Now, these are both resolutions.
Yes, they are. One is for emergency appropriation for retirement employees for the bondholders, starting to do this shortly.
I believe Councilman Cazarelli may be on the phone.
Yes, he just told them.
Councilman Cazarelli, you here?
I'm here.
Let the record reflect, Councilman Cazarelli has joined us. So now we have five people here.
Yes, we did.
We have these two items are special action. Do we need a motion to change the agenda? This is fine, just the agenda is here. Steve, do we want to find out if we have any questions specifically on these? Because usually, public participation comes before the resolutions. Is that a good thing to do, or no?
No, if you're gonna pass, then you're gonna pass.
Yeah? You don't want just...
Would you like me to check just the...
Yeah.
You mean the comments?
That's the fourth block.
No, she's checking the comments that we have here. I thought I saw one question about... I saw one question about a bomb. I'm not quite sure which question it was.
Yeah. It's ordinance five, I believe?
No, we're on special.
There's a comment.
That's ordinance five for second final reading, though. It's not this resolution. Isn't it?
You don't file for the order.
I thought somebody asked a question about that. I guess I don't study the questions as much as people think I do.
I don't see anything. I don't see anything, no.
What resolutions were these?
Resolution one was number three, and resolution number two for special action was number thirteen.
What happened to nine and 10? Are nine and 10 now jumped up?
No, I vote in the same.
So look at this. Here. And he's got, but I don't know what numbers they are now.
Nine and 10 stayed the same. All I did was where resolution...
But we don't have nine.
On the consent agenda, I put item was moved to...
But we don't have nine and 10 now. I apologize. I was looking at the second reading ordinances. They stopped at seven. Okay. Got it. So we're good? We're comfortable that nobody had really a specific question about either one of these resolutions?
Correct.
Okay. Sure. Special action number one.
Resolution authorizing issuance of $113,915.70. Special emergency notes for expenses related to the retirement of employees in and by the township of Belleville County of Essex, New Jersey.
And I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion? Second.
I have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Those following, that's a huge, long-term budget savings, cost savings matter. I could probably explain that next meeting during our budget presentation, but that's a huge savings and a big, big win for Belleville and a great idea that the manager brought to us. Number two.
Number two is the emergency resolution to extend the 2020 Towneberry budget.
Need a motion?
Make a motion? Second.
I have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay. We're still moving forward now, correct?
Yes, we are.
Item number 12, ordinances. Ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances to the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-2.9, parking time limited on certain streets.
Make a motion?
Need a motion?
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two, an ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances to the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-2.7, stopping or standing prohibited during certain hours on certain streets for the purpose of street cleaning.
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number three, ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances to the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-2.3, parking prohibited during certain hours on certain streets.
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
And number four, ordinance to amend, ordinance number 3490, creating personnel positions and, if not declassification compensation plans.
Make a motion? Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Uh, yes. Ordinances, item B. Ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading. We have a notice. This notice is gonna be read for both ordinances for second reading, and it will also cover the notice for public commenting.
Yes, does that agree with it?
Sure.
To the multiple executive orders declared by...
Is your microphone on, tell? Is your mic on?
Yes. And in effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, this September 8th, 2020 Township Council meeting will be closed to the general public. This meeting is being streamed live on the township's website, www.bellvillenj.org, as well as on the township's official Facebook page. The public always has an opportunity to make public comment to the mayor, municipal council during public meetings. With this new format, if you have a comment, please submit it to the township clerk at kcal@bellvillenj.org by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, September 8th. If there are any comments or questions on the ordinance for public hearing and second final reading, please submit them as well to the township clerk at Belleville at kcal@bellvillenj.org by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, September 8th. The township clerk will read into the record your comments or questions concerning the ordinances during the public hearing, and will read your comments during the public portion of the meeting. Please state your name, address, and state your comments.
Okay. So ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading. Ordinance one.
Ordinance number one, for public hearing, an ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances to the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-6A, four-way stop sign, as it means.
Need a motion?
Make a motion?
Vote in open public.
We have a motion made to open public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments specifically for this particular ordinance?
Yes, I do. I have a comment from Bill Milton. He's from 16 Hunkel, 16 Hunkel Street in East Beach. Why would the council be voting whether or not to add four-way stop signs at the intersections of Garden Avenue and Dawson Street when they have already been up for a week or more? It may bring more attention to the sandwich shop, but will also bring more confusion having a four-stop sign instead of a two.
So this is not the first time we're voting on this. This is the second reading. We did vote on this in August for first reading. We then, knowing that these are usually pretty automatic, because they're recommended by the Police Department or Traffic Department, we then put the order in with our Traffic Division to order signs, get them up, get them scheduled. So they may very well be up a week early, or a day early, if they went up today or yesterday. They have not been enforced. Nobody's getting a ticket, and I think four-way stop signs are very safe. I'm not quite sure. I don't think anybody's gonna be confused because they're gonna be there for a long time. That's it. Anything else?
That's all I have. Where does that go?
So let's get a motion to...
Motion to close and move for final adoption.
We have a motion to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Give me a second.
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 Thank you. Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Ordinance number two, for public hearing, an ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances to the township of Belleville, Chapter 8-16, handicap parking spaces.
Motion to open public?
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting. All in favor? Let's do it this way.
Aye.
Aye. So we are now open for public commenting. Do we have any specific comments on ordinance number two for second and final reading?
No.
We do not.
No comments for ordinance number two.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
Make a motion to close?
Right.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number three, for public hearing, ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of $513,915.79 for expenses related to the retirement of employees in and by the township of Belleville County of Essex, New Jersey.
Need a motion to open for public commenting?
Make a motion to open for public commenting? Second.
Motion made in second to open public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any specific questions for...
I have one question. This question is from Vincent Frank Tantoni, 129, now CrossFit family. I request the names of employees and the amount of their respective payouts. I ask for a breakdown of undue sick leave and/or vacation time for each employee. Also, are any of these employees recipients of recent salary increases approved by this council in the past few months?
I mean, it's a request, I guess. He's requesting it all. So can we get him? He has to make an open request?
Can you make an open request?
Yeah. I don't think we even have the information here, nor can we discuss it. Can we discuss it in public?
No.
I'm actually still having active conversations with present employees, and that would probably not be public information at this point.
But Mr. Frank Tantoni can certainly make the request, and then if we can provide him the information, we can provide him the information. I don't think, I can answer the last question. Any of these employees recipients of recent salary increases approved by this council last few months? No. And I'm not quite sure which increases this council approved in the past few months.
I don't think we have.
No, I think we've cut some, which Mr. Frank Tantoni never gives us any credit for, but I'm not quite sure we've had any increases. So to answer that question, I do not believe we've done any increases, and therefore, the answer to that question is no. And Mr. Frank Tantoni can certainly file an open request, and if the powers that be deem it to be something that we have to provide, we'll provide. But again, as I did mention, that this does save a lot of money. We have employees that are leaving, that are at the high range because they've been here for a long time. The payouts are very, very small, whether it's accrued sick time, vacation time. Again, all prior negotiated through various labor contracts stemming decades, I'm sure. Once they leave, I believe, my conversation with the managers, the overwhelming majority of the people leaving are not being replaced. If for some reason, we do replace people, they obviously start at the lowest possible rung. A rung that this council and this governing body created lower than the previous rung, which again, is something we don't get credit for, but I don't believe most of them are gonna be replaced.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. And, okay. Anything else for number two? Or number three?
That is all, ma'am.
That's it. Okay, so that one's done. So I'm gonna have entertain a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Make a motion to close and move for final adoption? Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Ordinance number four, for public hearing, bond ordinance providing for the file scanning project for the public client in and by the township of Belleville County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $100,000, therefore, authorizing to a total of $95,000. Bonds are known to the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Can I have a motion to open public participation?
Make a motion to open.
Second.
Motion made in second to open public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now open. Any specific questions for ordinance number four?
No, I do not have any comments, but we'll move on to four.
Should we double check, or you're pretty sure? Are you looking to Steve or no?
No, yeah, I don't. There's nothing out for it.
No, we're looking for four.
Looking for four. Next one.
Yeah, that's one for looking.
Okay. Need a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion made in second to close for public commenting and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Raziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Orders, excuse me, ordinance number five, for public hearing, bond ordinance provided for various improvements to the water utility entered by the township of Bellville and the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of five hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Bonds are known to the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Can I have a motion to open for public commenting?
Make a motion to open.
Second.
Motion made to open public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are now open for public commenting on ordinance number five for second reading. Do we have any specific questions on this one?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Fran, Vincent Fran Tantoni, what are the exact improvements to the water utility with this five hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond? If it is for replacement of lead lateral lines to private property, I strongly object to this. I own Bellville property, and I replace the lateral water service line at my own expense. The line from the curb valve to the building is a property owner's responsibility, not the rest of the taxpayers. Homeowners on my street have recently replaced their water lines. If this ordinance is approved, we who paid to replace our lateral should get a rebate from the town. However, I am not for that, and I do not want to pay for someone else's responsibility.
Okay, so I believe facts do matter sometimes, and, uh, I want to try and give you the facts that I know, then Mr. Iacono can jump in and correct me. So first and foremost, um, the federal government has ordered us to replace about five hundred and fifty lines?
Uh, I think we're down to four hundred.
Four hundred. So first and foremost, everybody in the town should know that, yes, uh, lead lines or lead service lines are the homeowner's responsibility in Bellville, as in most suburban communities. But, uh, the federal government has ordered us to replace at least four hundred of them. Uh, I asked, uh, the question of whether or not the Silver Lake replacement program would count, because Norco already replaced five hundred and fifty lines there. It did not. Uh, so we were mandated to cover four hundred lead line replacements. I believe we're doing it smart. We're going to be using some of the streets that are going to be ripped up in our future road improvement program for that. I too, Mr. Fran Tantoni, spent thousands of dollars to replace my lead service line, uh, about ten years ago. I do not believe the taxpayers are footing the bill, because Mr. Iacono correctly found wrong, but the, in the four hundred lines that we're replacing now will get a assessment through their water, through the individual homeowner's water bill?
Yes.
So Mr. Fran Tantoni's taxes are not paying these?
No.
Nor are mine, nor anybody else sitting up here. So, we're gonna do a overall, a far-reaching lead line service program replacement, uh, within the next couple of years. We're going to do that in conjunction with our road servicing program. As we do that, we are making the decision for taxpayers, uh, because we're responsible for the water that we provide them and sell them, that these lines have to be replaced. We will go out in the market and get a bulk price, far cheaper than what Mr. Fran Tantoni paid and probably what I paid. That bulk price will then be divvied up among the entire block, and as we resurface roads and we're digging up streets, something Mr. Fran Tantoni is an advocate of, we do the infrastructure at that time. As we replace your lead service lines for you, which is the homeowner's responsibility, that homeowner will receive a specific assessment on their water bill that will pay that down over the course of twenty years. Uh, so that's a good program. They get a group buying power discount, and they get twenty years to pay it back. And the taxpayers are not footing the bill, the individual homeowner is. Did I get that right?
That's, uh, pretty much it in a summary.
I think it's a great program. I wish the federal government did force us to do four hundred right away, but we have no choice on that. Any other questions for ordinance number five?
Double checking. No.
Okay. So without further ado, I'm going to ask for a motion to close public commenting and, uh, move for final adoption.
Make a, make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, and is that to move for final adoption?
To move for final.
Yeah. So we have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Raziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes. Item number six.
An excuse for public hearing, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits into establishing cap plan.
Motion open public?
Second.
Motion made in second to open public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have a comment?
Yes.
Cool.
Mario Dross, ninety-five Bell Street. What is the current cap? How much is the cap in the raise to? How much more in a dollar amount is that? As of today, how much is our short pool in revenues?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Our current cap is, uh, sixty-three million, three hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh, it's going up three and a half percent. That means two million, five hun, I'm sorry, two million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four sixty-eight dollars. And as far as our shortfall in our revenue, we just, uh, exceed by a little bit of over three million dollars.
Okay, I think that, I think you answered every question.
That was two questions, three answers.
Perfect. Steve, you have something, Steve?
No, he says, "Good job."
Oh.
I would take the credit, but I got the answers from Judy.
That's why we have our professionals on standby. Uh, okay, so without any other questions for that, I'm going to ask for a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
Make a motion to close.
Move for final.
We have a motion to close and move for final. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Raziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
When they reach his-
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Ordinance number seven, for public hearing, and ordinance to amend, ordinance numbers three, four, nine, zero, and three, four, nine, two, creating personnel positions and adopting classification-
Take that mic off.
-and compensation plans.
Motion open for public?
Second.
Motion made in second to open for public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, any specific comments for number seven?
Seven is from Mario Dross, ninety-five Bell Street. He asks, "I asked at the last meeting for the names and current salary of the individuals in that job title, and that was not provided. Again, who is in that position and current salary? What is the proposed salary for the person after the buyout? Are the vacant positions being filled with current employees or, or advertised for the public? Your answer last month was vague."
The middle of that question, uh, what proposed salaries for the person after the buyout, I'm not sure that pertains to this, does it? There's no, it's not about a buyout.
No.
What is the proposed salary for the person after the buyout? There's no, I'm confused by that part. Um, I thought we went over this last time. Again, this is more, more reductions, I believe the majority of them were reductions. There is one increase to, this is the town manager?
Yes.
There's one increase to the town manager. As Mr. Droes knows, as most people probably watching this know, that, uh, our township manager's salary, uh, Mr. Iacono graciously came on board over a year ago. He graciously accepted the prior part-time manager's salary. Uh, his, his thinking was that he would prove himself to us over the course of a year, and his contract, since he's a professional, would be then renegotiated. Uh, most of our salary ordinances have ranges to them, a low and a high. This particular one, again, filled by a prior manager who was part-time, was just a fixed dollar amount. So now we have a low side and a high side for the range. It is not a raise. Uh, Mr. Iacono's not getting one more dollar come tomorrow. Uh, it's just like everybody else. He's going to fit within that range, and his contract will then be negotiated or, uh, yeah, negotiated by the council with him. And, uh, if we strike a number that's in that range somewhere, it will be voted on by resolution. The council will have, I'm sorry, the public will have the ability to hear it, question it, talk about it, discuss it. Uh, so that is an ordinance, a salary ordinance, that I believe has a net reduction. If you add up all of the salaries that are changing, the net conclusion of that is a reduction, an overall reduction. Mr. Iacono was the only one that went up, and that's the range went up. Uh, there's no telling where he's going to land on that, so we don't know if overall it'll be high or low. Uh, but some of the other positions are overall reductions. So we do have some employees in those positions. Uh, those employees are already at the mid to high side. Therefore, if and when those employees leave, we have taken the ability to reduce those salaries to starting salaries, where somebody coming in would start at that lower salary. Um, so I'm not quite sure, at the last minute, current salary, individuals in the job, who's in the position, current salary. I don't know. Do you want to go any further with that one, or?
No, I mean, we, uh-
Do you have this, the, uh, second ordinance there?
It's the program we get, where we're actually placing salary and wages, so.
So deputy municipal clerk is an overall reduction. Uh, township manager, we're setting a new range, but by no means is there a salary set for that. Uh, administrative clerk, manager's office, uh, that position has been reduced. Um, superintendent of public works, we do have a superintendent of public works, that position has again been reduced. I, for some reason, don't believe, and director of purchasing, that position has been reduced. For some reason, I don't believe, uh, we're going to see on social media anytime soon that we've taken this action of reducing all these salaries, but it's a fact. These salaries have been reduced, with the exception of adding a range to the township manager's position. Uh, and again, the public will have the right to question that, when and if we do settle with Mr. Iacono. Um, or if Mr. Iacono decides to leave and somebody else comes in, the, the governing body will negotiate that, and the members of the public will have the right to know exactly what we're paying our township manager. I think we're good with that one. With that being said, uh, any other questions for number seven?
Yes, I have another question from Vincent Fran Tantoni, one thirty-nine, on South Park Avenue. I would like a clear explanation of this ordinance.
I think I just gave one. Um, every single position here has been a reduction, with the exception of a range for township manager. Township manager used to be a fixed cost. That's not necessarily fair, when Mr. Iacono's predecessor was basically part-time. It's now a range, just like every other employee. This council will sit with Mr. Iacono, or a negotiating committee of this council will sit with Mr. Iacono and, uh, try to strike a, a, a dollar amount that's fair and acceptable to him. Uh, if it's not, or if it's not fair and acceptable to us, uh, we'll be taking that conversation with somebody else potentially. But nobody's getting a rate, a, a salary, uh, an increase based on this vote tonight. Uh, and again, if, and when we do strike a, a, a deal with Mr. Iacono, that will be on resolution. The public will have a right to have questions on that. Uh, and again, just to reiterate the fact that these other positions on here, I know I just gave the explanation, but we're going to do it again. Deputy municipal clerk, substantial drop in that minimum. Township manager's now a range, administrative clerk, manager's office, again, a reduction in salary, superintendent of public works, we do have a superintendent of public works. That salary has now dropped, the minimum salary. If and when there is another superintendent of public works, my guess is he or she will be starting at a reduced salary, uh, which is the goal of all this director of purchasing, again, another reduction. So one, two, three, four reductions, and one range being set. I think that's clear. Anybody else?
That's all.
Okay. Without that being, with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
Make a, make a motion to close public comment.
Second. Motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Raziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Ordinance number eight, for public hearing, ordinance to amend to Bellville, amend the chapter thirty-four, metal trees, and renewing change tree removal and protection.
Motion open public?
Thank you, Steve. Yes, we have a motion open public comment.
Second.
Uh, all, in a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
We are open. Anybody have a question on this one?
Yes, I have a question from Mario Dross, ninety-five Bell Street. Who is the forester? Is that a position already being held by someone, or will it be a new position?
Can I-
The forester's a third-party contract. We, we, we would only use when we need a forester. In certain, in certain cases, we would have to call in a professional to make a determination on a tree.
Did you put this on?
I did.
Oh.
Well, Anthony and I had a discussion.
Yeah, no, no.
It is-
I thought this was a cleanup one, that's just why I was pointing to you.
It is technically a cleanup one. Um-
No, you can let him.
No, I can, I should.
I was just answering the question, I wasn't.
All right, so you speak to the forester and Steve will speak to the ordinance.
So the forester, there is no new position, it is, nobody's holding the position. In the event that, in some of our green tree applications that we apply for, we are required to have a signature from a forester. And it's basically a tree expert, and we would hire one on a per needed basis.
Yes, so it's a slightly a cleanup one, there's some.
You have a microphone now.
Oh, I don't. It's slightly cleanup one. Our prior ordinance had our construction code official inspecting trees. Obviously, our construction code official doesn't have the expertise as far as the state's concerned with respect to trees and the replacement of trees. So this ordinance was drafted so that can be cleaned up, and the applications that their green team is making in terms of getting certain grants and approvals, this ordinance did not pass muster. So the state is the one that said this ordinance did not pass muster, so the prior ordinance did not.
Now I know we're trying to get more points, is this the green team points? In order to get more points, to be a sustainable community, they, the state had to review this ordinance, the state didn't like the ordinance, or amended the ordinance.
It doesn't qualify, so.
Right, now I know what it is.
I got ordinance that the state, the state actually provided ordinance that qualified. Ours was close, really, one of the main replacements was this forester, because we did not have a forester. Like I said, our construction code official was giving the okay to take trees down or not. And the state didn't, obviously didn't like that, so that's what's going to happen.
Thank you. Wait, why don't you give him that mic, because he might need it for later. Anything else for ordinance number eight?
That's all.
Okay. I can't, no. We have a motion to close and move for final adoption, clerk call roll.
Councilman Casarelli.
Yes.
Raziano.
Yes.
Nettori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Menon.
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances for second reading, we're moving on to item number thirteen, which is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
We're going to take them in.
Will we receive public?
We do, I'm glad you're paying attention there, Councilman. So I need a motion to open public comments. It's too cold in here, my brain is numb, I apologize.
Make a motion to open public comments.
Second.
My fingertips are numb, we have a motion made to open, motion made in second to open public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, I'm going to jump off the phone now.
And that was Councilman Casarelli, thank you, sir. Councilman had a prior engagement, he was grateful enough to join us for some of the important votes of the night. So public commenting.
Yes. First one from William Melon from sixteen Humble Street. He states, "Many people I converse with can't believe that taxpayers are paying for the mayor's and the majority of the council health benefits. They really get upset when we tell them we have to Oprah a question that asks how much these health benefits cost us taxpayers. The mayor, town manager, and township attorney apparently just don't want the taxpayers to find out. If it's a state law that taxpayers must Oprah this request to obtain an answer, it's apparently more corrupt here than we thought it was, thank you."
So I'm going to assume that those people that you converse with were also upset that former Mayor Kimball and former Councilman Kevin Kennedy were also getting the same benefits that we're still getting. This is not a new thing, council's gotten benefits for years. I just, I'm still kind of a little baffled as to why people believe this is something new, it's not. And I don't create Oprah, if you have specific questions, asking them in this kind of format is one thing, but if you're looking for specific documentation, files, figures, records, that's what Oprah is for. And I'm not quite sure why we would be any more corrupt, because we make residents go through Oprah, which is actually a tool that residents have to obtain information. Do we have anybody else?
Yes, we do.
This one is Michael Sheldon, forty-seven, Florida. Number one, at almost every council meeting, there is at some point passionate discussion on the part of Mr. Melham about the excessive number of lawsuits that have been brought against the township and their associated very expensive settlements. To this end, in recent weeks, I have submitted two related Oprah requests to get details of these lawsuits and their associated settlements, with both requests denied for spacious reasons. As you should be aware, the New Jersey court ruled in two thousand nine in the precedent-setting case, Asbury Park Press versus the County Department, that governmental entities cannot enter interconfidentiality agreements to prevent the public from learning the details of their legal settlements. So I'll address my first question to Mr. Martino. What specific language do I need to include in Oprah requests to get all the financial details for every township legal settlement entered into from two thousand five to present, lest this become yet another case caused by legal action against the town hall? If Mr. Martino wants to probably speak to me about this matter, please let me know.
Should we take them individually, or read the whole comment?
We take them, I would take them individually.
All right, do you have anything to, just use your mind.
Well.
Tom, can you?
Yes.
I can't give Mr. Sheldon legal advice on how to draft an Oprah, but Oprah requires you to ask for specific records. He asks for specific records, Kelly will respond to the Oprah request.
I'll also add that Mr. Sheldon has probably never missed a council meeting in the last five, six years. So he sat here, he sat here while employees were fired, he sat here while this, or the mayor and then council passed resolutions authorizing settlements. Certainly, he remembers a four hundred thousand dollar payment and a five hundred thousand dollar payment for the last two. Those two employees were fired a day after municipal election. So I know that Mr. Sheldon is aware of those, he sat here for every single meeting, he videoed them, and he put them up on YouTube. So I could easily direct him to those.
And the ones you specifically, ad nauseam, spoke about.
Right.
Are there?
They're all there, so, but I would love for, I would love for Mr. Sheldon to get those documents. I would love for Mr. Sheldon to have the guts to then put them on social media. I would love for Mr. Sheldon to explain the millions of dollars the prior mayor, prior council, prior administrators, and prior township attorneys cost this town and cost these residents. I would love for Mr. Sheldon to obtain the documents, so whatever, I urge you, Mr. Sheldon, to request those documents, and then I would love for you to post them on social media and explain to everybody why their taxes are so high. We just paid out four hundred thousand dollars this year between a settlement, I shouldn't say a settlement, between a loss and between legal fees for an employee that was fired illegally. Prior to that was another four or five hundred thousand dollars for an employee that was fired a day after an election here in town. That stuff no longer happens. Mr. Tucci, who was our prior Township Manager, was here for three years, never had one of those lawsuits. Mr. Iacono has now been here for a year plus, never won those lawsuits. I've now been mayor for two years, never won those lawsuits. So all of those lawsuits, Mr. Sheldon, are, happened while you sat here, happened while you recorded it, and happened while you never said a word, every single time those settlements appeared on resolutions for meetings that you sat here and never said a word about. But again, I implore you, please fill out your Oprah correctly. I would love to see you post that on social media and explain to the residents the millions of dollars that the prior mayor, manager, council people, town attorney cost the residents and the taxpayers. I would love to see you do that. Number two.
Number two, while both the Delvalle planning and zoning boards have been using Zoom video conferencing during the last couple of months to allow community members to directly participate in the meetings as is required by state law, this council apparently refuses to use Zoom for similar purposes. As Council for the New Jersey Foundation for Open Government has advised me, citizens have a legal right under OPMN to directly participate in governmental meetings while they are in session and to deny this direct participation is a potential civil rights violation. It is important to note that indemnification protection is voided if a civil rights violation question was performed with malice. In order to avoid such litigation against this council, we move tonight to authorize the use of Zoom video conferencing with all future council meetings until such time that the public is once again allowed to be physically present at these meetings. And by the way, Mr. Melham, our BOE president is hoping to have our next BOE meeting on September twenty-first take place in the Delvalle High School Oratorium with the public in attendance.
So I find it ironic that Mr. Sheldon is complaining about participating in a public meeting, as he's participating in a public meeting, by the way. I don't believe his rights being denied, I believe I just listened to two questions or two comments here in public. Mr. Sheldon likes to play with words, so therefore, in the beginning of his statement, he mentions that members of the community have to directly participate in their meetings as required by law. That is true for planning and zoning boards, because the presentation of experts have to be challenged or can be challenged by members of the public. We do not have experts participating and providing testimony to which we would have to allow for members of the public to question them live. So that is true, it is required by state law for planning board and zoning boards. It is not required by state law for council meetings, we are in total compliance with our council meetings. I, for one, would prefer to be in person, I wouldn't have to repeat myself as much as I do. And I think that's it for that one. Steve?
Well, zoning and planning board meetings are quasi-judicial, so.
Well, I said they are different, because you have to be able to question witnesses on the fly.
They're quasi-judicial, and they have their hearing-based question and answers, swearing and testimony and so on.
I mean, Mr. Sheldon is participating with a two-page letter today of all kinds of questions, so I can't imagine how anybody in their right mind would think that he's not having his afforded opportunity to participate in the meeting. I'm sorry, Councilman Robel, did you have something to say?
Yeah, turn the chair to the manager. I know that we, you know, we're moving everybody towards all this three sixty-five and possibly integrating somewhere along the lines of teams, is that something, I mean, even from our perspective, rather than having to use this bridge in the future somewhere, I know it's not easy to implement always, but is that something we can explore?
I think we have explored it, this is me, Steve, answering, I think we have explored it in the past, I think we have. I don't believe every member of the council has the ability to work a Zoom meeting. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I'm just saying, we do have teams, I think we have the capacity eventually to use teams, like, so when this happens in the future, or something of this nature happens in the future, and say, one of us is traveling or one of us can't, you know, I think it might be easier for us to come in on teams than to do this, I don't know.
Yeah, something we can always discuss.
I'm just spitballing here.
Okay, anybody else? No? Okay, anything else?
Number three, in regard to the declaration of the entire township as an area of need of rehabilitation, which is item ten on tonight's council agenda. Let's recall that during the sales pitch, Mr. Melham made for it during the July fourteen council meeting. He described it as effectively an exclusive tax break plan for existing homeowners to help them perform maybe repair work or renovation work without initially incurring the full associated property tax increases. Instead, these tax increases will be based in steps, based in steps of twenty percent over five-year period. In fact, in response to Frank Fleishman's question about the declaration, Mr. Melham explicitly said, "It's not for new development." Based upon what transpired at the August thirteenth planning board hearing about this declaration, either Mr. Melham doesn't know the actual details of the proposal or is pathologically lying about it in response to Mr. Fleishman's question. It was clearly revealed during the August thirteenth planning board meeting as a result of a series of direct questions from both Ray Nero and Andrew Conti, that there was a third prong to this plan that would in fact apply to new construction. Mr. Conti then went on to ask about the following scenario. Suppose a developer puts up a thirty million building available. Are you telling me that he wouldn't pay any taxes in the first year, and only twenty percent of his total tax bill in the second year? And only forty percent of his tax bill in the third year, etc.? The Township's redevelopment council, Dean Donatelli, answered in affirmative. So this alleged rehabilitation plan is in essence a hidden modified redevelopment plan with intrinsic, albeit five-year tax abeiements, and whose real intention is to apparently help developers build whatever they want with huge tax breaks to boot under the guise of helping Delvalle's homeowners. Mr. Melham will likely smilingly respond as he continues to hide from the direct public confrontation that I don't understand the redevelopment plan, but even his mini-nnee, Mr. Banda, tried to convince the planning board members of the virtue of this part of the plan, and that developers shouldn't have to pay any taxes, at least the first year, until most or all of their units have been rented to avoid any financial risks. Now that all of this was recorded, which will be added to YouTube before the end of day. So while developers would realize huge tax breaks once again under this scheme, the typical Delvalle homeowner might see a hundred dollar tax break and still be obligated to pay their ten thousand dollars of existing property taxes. The planning board unanimously voted to fully reject the developer new construction component of the plan, while also rejecting the proposal that the entire township be declared an area of rehabilitation. Instead, they want such rehabilitation declarations to be applied on a case-by-case basis. If the council is truly committed to doing something supportive of its taxpayers' homeowners for a change, you will need the planning board's recommendations to exempt even more tax breaks and concessions for developers, while increasing the twenty thousand dollars cap for existing homeowners to appropriately usher in a wave of needed improvements to the township's existing housing stock. Though many council members have the courage to make a motion to table the existing rehabilitation declaration, so it can be reworked to reflect the planning board's recommendations in order to truly support the needs of your constituents.
Okay. There's a lot in there. So backing up to the beginning of the comment in number three, so I never describe it as an exclusive. Again, Mr. Sheldon loves to use his own adjectives in the worst possible way to try and explain anything I've said previously, never say exclusive tax break. With regard for new development, I think Mr. Sheldon was on that Zoom meeting with the planning board. I've watched, it was over an hour-long discussion, and just so the residents are familiar, because you won't hear this education from people like Mr. Sheldon, that the planning board that night's goal, they were, was the right. They were tasked with one item, and that was whether or not they agree or disagree with Mr. Harretts's findings, that the township be put in an area, that the township would qualify under those two particular clauses that Mr. Harretts identified. That's really the point of the planning board, to see whether or not they agree or disagree with the engineer's findings. They do agree, that was never in question, they did agree with Mr. Harretts's findings for that. With regard to not new development, I'm not going to bore maybe everybody else on this, but there are three different programs that we're doing, it's already been approved by this council, by the way. So the improvements to single two-family homes is in there, the renovations to multifamily homes. The third one is the new construction. But the difference that everybody needs to understand is that the improvements to single-family and two-families and the renovations to multifamily industrial and commercial structures is basically an as-of-right. That happens, now that this program's there, that happens automatically. When I said that it's not for new development, it's because a new development, while they do have a home somewhere in this ordinance, it still requires council approval. It's not automatic. So the first two, the tax assessor can just sign a one-page application, the tax assessor signs off on it, it's done. When I said it's not for new development, it's because that third program that does qualify for new development still has to be voted on by the governing body, so it's not automatic, it's not necessarily as-of-right. That's the big difference. Mr. Sheldon, in his two pages here, failed to mention all that. He also failed to mention that Mary Ann, because I watched the meeting, Mary Ann, one of our planners, said that this program's up and running in Jersey City, and very, very few people, actually, very few developers actually took advantage of that for their own specific financial reasons. So it's something that's not, not that widespread. I would also say, I believe Mr. Sheldon was in favor of the twenty-four acre bridge development deal down in the valley. That's going to take the Walter Kitty site, that's been empty for twenty-four, for forty or fifty years now, twenty-four acre site, and get that back on the tax record. Well, guess what, bridge development, the one that we all approved, the one the planning board loved, the one that Mr. Sheldon, I think, was so worried that we were going to change it last minute when we voted on this, that's actually this part three, that's actually this one, that's actually new construction, multifamily, entire project, except for tax years, that's industrial and commercial property. That third prong that Mr. Sheldon is arguing against is the actual bridge deal. So we obviously are, that's a five-year deal, by the way, it's not a thirty-year deal. And if that's not there, they might come in for a thirty-year deal, by the way. So I think Mr. Sheldon has his facts wrong, or is just purposely, which I think is probably the case, trying to misguide people as he continues to do that. But the planning board, again, the planning board unanimously voted to fully reject Mr. So you were there, I watched it, again, they were talking, they did not fully reject Mr. Harretts's recommendations, which is what they had to do, they didn't like the concept of the third prong. Again, the third prong was not written by me, not written by our planners, that's state. That's what the state says we have to do. So the planning board, and even this council, can disagree with that all they want. The fact that the matter is that state statute, that wording came exactly from, Mr. Donatelli got it exactly from the state. So I did hear the planning board meeting, I do know they had a question about that third program. They should know, and I think they do know this, that third program is literally the program that Bridge is getting now. It's a five-year area need of rehabilitation. It was an individual program that was approved, here, they would have more ability to do that, but it still took council approval. So whereas the individual homeowners that are going to benefit, I disagree with Mr. Sheldon saying it's going to be a hundred dollar tax break. I don't even think Mr. Sheldon is a taxpayer, by the way. So I'm not sure how he would divvy up these different taxes, but it's certainly not just a hundred dollar tax break. And anything bigger than that would actually have to come before the governing body for an approval.
Is the tax assessor on the line for us? Because he's one who basically kind of gave, brought us to this original.
No, he.
Kevin's on vacation.
He's on vacation, but you're right, Councilman Robel, he did fully endorse this program, or tax assessor. And really, he's the main decision-maker for the first two programs. Again, any big developer that wants to take advantage of this would still have to come and get approval from the council. There's no question about that.
And I was trying to understand, I read through the Harretts's letter, and it kind of says that, I guess they were trying to figure out, is there a way to, you know, put this meaning towards, I guess, R one and R two zones to keep it this multi-residential, or is that a fly-in variation of the?
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Donatelli, it's got to be town-wide. We, yeah, we've done an individual one before, which is the bridge deal, which again, would now qualify under this part three. But again, it's still going to require council approval.
And again, when you look at it, just the word developer pops out, but there are a lot of homes like us that actually built two- and three-family homes that would live in the, look for a second investment, look for a third investment, that this helps out. Everybody's just thinking of a developer, and it's not, it helps people like us.
It's not everybody, it's those few people that are against everything like to portray it that way, because they know those are buzzwords, tax break, developer, they know that they can rile people up. But really, this overwhelmingly is positive to the residents that can take advantage of it, to the homeowners that can take advantage of it, and to the overall tax base, because this will spark more development and wise development and better development, which equals better rateables. That concludes, that concludes, Mr. Sheldon, is there anybody else?
Yes, there is, and I just want to respond there to the Fuchis and Contona, who have known states, how well is the town doing regarding the census? Do you have any idea when the cell phone apartments will be open? And will the town be giving flu shots to the seniors and so, what would be the procedure?
Yes, on the flu shots, and we will post it on the website. We will have the, we'll have the dates up this week, because I know we are getting ready for flu shots.
Okay. Census, the last time I saw it, so ten years ago, census, we hit about sixty-eight or sixty-nine percent. It's my goal to break seventy this year, we did get the extension. It's my goal to break 70 this year. We did get the extension because of COVID. I think now we're going into October, maybe. So we did get a census, an extension. I thought we were in the low 60s, which told me that we'll probably have enough time to hit that 70% mark. Again, we've been very limited. We do not have the ability to send our teams door-to-door to underperforming areas, and we don't have the ability to do some of the events. We did one event, but we really don't have the ability to do events. Cell Hall Apartments, I know for a fact, because I lived right next door to them. They are working every day. I could say that progress has been slow, but I could also say, as of late, progress has been quite noisy, sparking some complaints in the surrounding areas. I just moved out of the area about three days ago, so I didn't hear... I didn't hear any of the noise that some of the residents are complaining about. I know Mr. Iacono's office is dealing with it. Listen, they want to open, because they're carrying that property monthly. That's a pretty big nut for them. They want to open. They want to get some rent in there. They're looking open as probably as eagerly as we are looking to get them open, but they are working. I've been told last June, I was told this past summer, they missed both those deadlines, but there are people there working, that's for sure. Anything else?
Yes, the next one is from Mary Jo's, 95 Belshree, who states, "Resolution number 10, is there a cap on the tax break for residents? Does this always apply to developers and who may purchase a multi-dwelling? Resolution nine, I thought that the owner originally purchased that property to build a storage warehouse for their business. Why does this belong to residential? My questions from last meeting were not answered. I asked, rumor has it that an employee close to you may be moved to the position in the clerk's office in the near future. If so, has the township taken any classes or courses? This was not answered also. How many people that worked in your election campaign now have employment in this township at Bevelville? Public notice in the store ledger this week shows that Anford Township is allowing the public to attend their meeting, but a limited amount. When was there unofficial reported go-by the council to change the meeting times to five? Your comments are one-sided since we cannot respond to you. Sounds like something that is done in countries with dictators. Getting only part answer or no answers, I feel, are a violation of my civil rights."
I apologize that you feel that way. If you feel that way, there's nothing I can really do about it. One-sided, cannot respond to me. Again, I didn't create a state of emergency. I'm not the governor. I didn't give the restrictions that are on our public meetings. But it seems like we're having a back-and-forth now, so I can't imagine your rights are being violated, and it's really one-sided. You spoke your side. I'm going to speak my side. It's not ever a back-and-forth conversation, Mr. Jo's. You know that. You were former mayor. You know this isn't a back-and-forth conversation. This is public commenting. You have the right to make comments. You might ask questions. We might have some answers for you, but we don't necessarily always have the answers. With regard to rumors, I tend to not comment on rumors. If I did, I'd be very busy. But just to give you an example, I believe Mr. Frantantoni, at one point, he doesn't use rumors. He likes to use initials. And the last two initials he used, I believe, was initials A.S., was getting a big job in the rec department. Guess what? Never panned out. And I believe another initial was J.L. That was somebody up for a huge $40,000 or $50,000 raise, and again, that never happened. So rumors tend to not pan out in Bevelville. Therefore, I don't waste too much time on them. How many people worked on my campaign? As I mentioned, there are less employees today in Town Hall than in 2018. 2019, there were less employees than 18. 2020, less employees than 2019. There's probably three people, maybe. Keep in mind, we had three elected officials that got elected two years ago. Maybe we've added some employees. Those employees are all at a lower salary than previous employees that got hired. This governing body, Mr. Jo's, you never seem to talk about it. But the lowest rung in DPW used to be laborer. It's about a $49,000 start. This governing body thought that was too much. We created a title called maintenance worker, started about $38,000. This governing body thought clerk one was a little too much in the $40,000 range, going up to clerk four in the astronomical range of about $90,000. This governing body thought that was too much. We created a position called count clerk, I believe, in the mid-30s. Mr. Frant, Mr. Jo's, you never seem to talk about that. But you love to try and insinuate that a lot of people affiliated with me or the elected officials that got elected two years ago have hired so many people. It's just not true at all. Resolution number 10, cap on the tax break for residents. Is there a cap? So I believe 25. I don't have the exact wording. Improvements to single two-family residents, 20 years or older, five-year abatement up to 20... I've heard 20. I've heard... It's 20? Because they mentioned 25. It is. In the planning board meeting, they kept mentioning 20. It's really 25. Up to $25,000 in improvements. And number nine, originally... What property are we talking about in resolution number nine? Does anybody know? Somebody want to pitch in here, maybe?
Number nine?
630 Washington Avenue.
630, 630. That's the across the Morrison Mall. So the question is, "I thought the owner originally purchased that property to build a garage warehouse for businesses." I... I don't know. Maybe he should ask the owner. I believe that owner bought that as an approved project that was always a multifamily development. Again, ask them. I mean, we didn't rezone it residential. That was a plan that was approved before it was even elected. We've been working hard with the owner to make it a lot better, and I believe it is a lot better. But that was residential. I have photographs of the original building they presented to the prior mayor, and it was one of the ugliest buildings I've ever seen in my life. And I'm very happy that they've now come to the table, been working with us. They've been working with us for about two years to get this project right. But I have no idea if they originally intend to build storage or a warehouse. You could ask them. I think that's most of it. Yep. Anything else?
Last one is from Vincent Tantoni, one thing I might not pass again, who states, "I read your letters in a side corner regarding ongoing budget issues. You stated that you are concerned about rising property taxes, and every year, our various professionals convince the majority of the council that next year will be better. Same for you, state, this seems to never come to fruition. I agree with you. What I do not agree with is that... With you is that Bevel doesn't necessarily have a spending problem. It's more of an income problem. Not so. In Bevel's first 150 years, the budget rose to $22 million. In just the recent history of the council manager former government, our budget has ballooned over $71 million. You asked for Mr. Iacono to give you budget cuts recommendations for 2021. No, we need tax cuts now. Family members, neighbors, and some of my customers have some dramatic cuts in income issue. A 5% or 10% salary reduction for government employees, furloughs, and more efficient means providing services are all the things that the private sector does to survive. And of course, you can stop your egotistical spending on renovating and redecorating your mayor's office. Past mayors were satisfied with the desk in existing office, but your ego is going to allow that. Out-of-control spending is killing our cities and our state. Is it any wonder that for the second year in a row, New Jersey is number one in residents leaving our states, including over two dozen of my family members? As I have ended my letters to the editor since Governor Tom King doubled the state budget in just eight years, cut spending now. By the way, I see you renovated the township parking lot on the West Side of Washington Avenue. Thanks. It looks good. Think you could thank my wife for bringing to your attention the horrendous condition of this lot?
So I'm glad Mr. Frantantoni agrees with me that we have a budget issue. He doesn't want to see taxes cut for next year, or budget cuts for next year. He wants them now. I would love Mr. Frantantoni, rather than write three paragraphs based on his prior elected official experience, to tell us exactly what we should do. Should we start laying off police or fire? Should we start privatizing our ambulance? Where should we start, Mr. Frantantoni? Because you want the cuts now. You want to cut spending now. As Mr. Frantantoni knows from his time in public office, 75% of the municipal budget's employees' salaries, wages, and compensation, as I have repeated to nauseam, there are less employees today than when I got here two years ago. So therefore, we've done our part as a governing body to not add too many people to salaries and to payroll, which is really the only thing that we can do. Everything else, Mr. Frantantoni, talks about a 5% or 10% salary reduction. Great idea, Mr. Frantantoni. I agree with you now. Tell me how to do that when you have labor contracts and negotiations and contractual obligations. Please explain to me how we do that. Mr. Frantantoni, you talk about furloughs, but you don't tell the residents that furloughs have to be voluntary. And you don't tell the residents that the unions have to agree to furloughs. Mr. Frantantoni, you sat here. You were in elected office. You know that, Mr. Frantantoni. So you're pandering to residents to make them think that you want us to do something that you know we can't do, Mr. Frantantoni. I can't just furlough employees. The unions have to agree to that. You know that. I can't cut salaries 10, 5% or 10%. You know that, Mr. Frantantoni. Yet, we just had an ordinance on where we did reduce salaries, Mr. Frantantoni. I never heard you say, "Great job. That's a start." Again, it's just showing how transparent some people can be. You talk about past mayors, Mr. Frantantoni. I know you're an elected official, but I don't believe you were ever mayor. Therefore, I'm not quite sure how you can say what prior mayors were or were not happy with. Perhaps if you were mayor, you would have more say in that, I think. But you want us to cut spending now? I want us to cut spending now. I gave Mr. Iacono a list of things that I'm looking for. Mr. Iacono gave us a great recommendation. I look forward to the next council meeting when we have to vote on our budget, and having my council colleagues join me in directing Mr. Iacono to cut those things that we can cut from the budget. But I wasn't here. You know, in 150 years, the budget went from $22 million. They were also on horseback by then, back then, Mr. Frantantoni. So a lot has changed in the world since the budget was $22 million. You were even here in office for a brief time, I believe. So we are looking. I'm glad that you're going to support us in these budget cuts. I'm glad that you don't think they're happening soon enough, but I can guarantee you that we are going to get some budget cuts for next year. And I do disagree with you, and we have that right to respectfully disagree with each other, that we do have, not necessarily a spending issue, but we have an income problem, something that I know, Mr. Frantantoni, you're against all these developments that bring in ratables. So yet, you want us to cut taxes, but you don't want us to increase revenue. I don't see that really happening anytime soon, which is why I want budget cuts as drastic as we can go, within our limitations with contractual obligations. And I'm also looking for increased revenue wherever we can get it. And I'm glad that your wife agreed with me, that that lot was in bad shape for many, many years. It's something that I've talked about at least for two years. And I'm glad that we all tend to agree on that. Anybody else?
That is it?
No? Good entertaining motion to close public commenting? We have a motion made. All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like we are out of public commenting. Next item. I'm sorry, Steve. Did you hear that?
Do you want a motion to move the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was going to first pull off the... I saw some... The numbers have all changed now. Hold on. No? There are 14 and 15. I'm going to pull those off. Six. How does that work? We're just going to defeat it, pull it, not vote on it, table it?
Not table it. It's going to be a new... It's eventually going to be a new rule.
Want to defeat it? Table it?
Well, you can't defeat it.
Table it, and then let me know when it comes. Pass on.
They don't? Okay. So Steve, if you didn't hear us, Steve Revelle, if you didn't hear the conversation, Mr. Martino is requesting that we pull off resolution number six, and we table that. There will be a new replacement of resolution coming probably for the next council meeting. And I'm going to pull off 14 and 15.
So we're just going to table six when we come back?
Right. You want to just do it now? Let's make a... Give me a motion to table item number six, somebody.
Make a motion to table number six.
Motion made in second to... Well, we're going to pull it off first and then vote on it. All right, so we just pulled off resolution six, and we have a motion made to table. Can we do it that way? You want to pull it off first, vote on pulling it off? All right. Give me a motion to pull off item number six.
Make a motion to pull off number six.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's now off. Now, need a motion to table it.
Make a motion to table six.
Motion made in second to table resolution number six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's done? Okay. I'm going to... It's October, so we have another meeting?
Yes, we have another one this September.
Want to just table it now?
You can table it.
Can we? Three votes can table it? Yeah. Yeah, three votes can table it.
No, it's not a court.
So what are we doing? We're discussing resolutions 14 and 15, in case you're not following us.
Only three of them that's voted on. We have a court on the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Well, they can't be considered, so you just...
You have one vote, though.
You're right. They can't be voted on.
So you take off the consent, and you do what with them?
Table them, I guess.
No, we don't. We can't table.
You can't table them because you can't vote them.
What a conundrum. This is why you get the big bucks, Mr. Martino.
I need my Robert's. I don't know that book inside.
Oh, come on!
My Robert's Rules and Order. I would say that...
It doesn't matter. We can redo. We have time to do it for the next meeting anyway.
Right.
But what do we do now, is the question? Can the clerk pull them off the agenda?
I think the clerk will pull it off for the agenda. I don't know. Just pull them off the agenda.
Just tell us that.
No, it's not.
We're going to redo.
It's not.
We're not doing anything.
All right, so why don't you tell us that we're not going to consider?
We're drawing resolutions number 14 and 15 from the consent agenda.
Resolutions 14 and 15 will be withdrawn by the clerk from the consent agenda.
Okay. So do we need to move the consent agenda?
Yes. Now we can move the consent agenda.
Motion to move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to move the consent agenda. Clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Cosmally. No, I'm sorry. Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Revelle.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. New business? Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn?